This time, I'd like to call to order the November fourteenth, two thousand and seven zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that Mr. Scott Courtwright is absent and all other commissioners are present. This time, I would like to go ahead and open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on any item that is not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Item four, acceptance of the minutes of the September twelfth, two thousand and seven meeting.
October tenth.
Well, they had September twelfth here, so...
I think there's a revised September twelfth.
There is. There is a revised September sheet.
Right, but it's in the last part of the...
And... All right, hold on, Charles?
It should be shown receipt and read with a motion.
But the September twelfth should be under old business and not...
It should be the tenth. It should be the tenth. It should be October tenth.
All right, my mistake. I read what was on the agenda.
So how dare you?
Yes. Uh, acceptance of the October tenth, two thousand and seven minutes. So I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion pass. Item five, public hearing to consider the following rezoning cases. Five A zoning review ID, one eight two five point oh seven, Whitney S. Marshawn tract and Noel Babin tract.
Good evening. My name is Derek Murphy with Ferris Engineering. I'm here representing the clients to rezone two one and a half acre tracks along Highway seventy-four. We're rezoning these tracks to Business Park, which is consistent with the zoning across the street. The use in this area is commercial. I know it is rezoned RM around it, but they do have some commercial crossroads close by, and the land use along seventy-four is mostly commercial in the area. We decided to go Business Park because it doesn't match the zoning adjacent to it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any comments or questions from commissioners at this time?
You say that it's commercial on the north side of Highway seventy-four?
Uh, some uses, there's some small businesses, like a daycare and that kind of things in the area.
Do you have this here? Can you show us on here what you're talking about?
How about...
Or if you have the same thing?
Is the screen on?
Okay.
Turn it back on. Touch the button again? It was on before.
Yeah, it was.
Give it just a second.
What are you asking?
Uh, just basically explain what you just did, but show us where you're talking about on the...
On the north side?
Yeah. Which properties are you rezoning on there?
The rezoning is actually right here, as I got them scribbled on right there. Right across the street is Business Park. These are two small lots. On the left-hand side, as you see here, is kind of a gas facility. Basically, they've got a lot of boughs and so forth. And the uses in this area here are somewhat commercial, like a daycare and other things, and then this crossroad commercial's here. Across the street is construction yards and that kind of stuff.
Well, the only trouble, Mr. Murphy, is what you're referring to, that gas facility?
Yes.
Uh, that's been there as long as I can remember. That's a non-conforming use. It was there before zoning came into effect, so it's still medium intensity residential. It's just a non-conforming use.
That's correct.
That's kind of a weak argument to go ahead and ask for rezoning to Business Park.
Well, Business Park is across the street and the street itself, so we are...
And I understand that. I'm taking that into consideration, but I'm also looking at some of the other points that you're bringing out. I think a lot of the commercial aspects in this area are non-conforming uses.
Are you saying the Business Park, is that orange one there?
No, the Business Park is the light green.
Okay, and what is the orange strip?
The orange is called transition.
That's the made up, uh, made up one that they came up with?
One of those prime, prime fields.
But I think this is similar to what we did on seventy-three, where we allowed the insurance gentleman to rezone his property, because it was pretty much the only thing there that had not been, that was not being used as business, even though they may have been grandfathered in, they were still businesses.
Even so, I... It still needs to be brought out. It's a non-conform, you know, we have non-conforming uses here. Okay? And I do, you're right, it's Business Park across the street, and that should be your, the argument that you're making, not non-conforming uses.
I was using both points.
I understand, but on one, I'm gonna call you on one.
Well, Business Park right across the street, and that's the reason we're going Business Park here.
Have you been in contact with any other neighbors on the north side of seventy-four in regards to their potential interest in also becoming Business Park?
No.
Because it would maybe make a little more sense if it was not just one dot there as opposed to a whole strip of three or four properties beside each other?
All of seventy-four, pretty much all of seventy-four in that area is commercial, Steve. There's a nursery, there's an antique store, there's...
Uses.
It's just the uses, it's non-conforming uses. It's still zoned, medium intensity residential. Any comments, other comments or questions from commissioners? Not, then I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
I'm Tanya Stelli, and I actually own the daycare that is on the side of the property he's speaking about. We were here last year, year before, whatever, we were in this building, we were on Church Point Road. They made the whole tract of land, but it's up to Babin Road. They said it was going to be residential. They had variances about the lot sizes not being right, what have you. The property he is talking about is on the front side by my daycare. The other side of the street is not Business Park. There's one spot across, along the Gudine that is an industrial park. There's houses from that point, upright past the daycare, where they have S&amp;S sandblasting, as well as automotive repair shop. These people across the street, we don't want any more business products. And what exactly kind of products, business-wise, is he gonna put? And it's also, to my knowledge, that there is pipeline running through the property he's speaking about, because when they talked about putting housing on my side, up by the daycare, they said they could not, because of the fact that the pipeline ran through it, they were not gonna put any housing on my side at all. They would maybe put a park of some sort. So I don't know how he could put businesses up close to where we're at. And we just need to know what he's planning on putting, because it is a daycare center with one hundred and thirty children involved, and I just don't want anybody just floating around on right on the side of us.
Thank you.
Mr. John LeBlanc?
I'm John LeBlanc. First of all, I'd like to know what he's gonna put there, but I've been living there for seventy years, directly across the road, me and my two sisters, and Doll Philippi lives to the left of me. Uh, hide is a... There is some businesses around there and further toward the Gudine and all where they go in, but there's definitely no commercial across the road from him. And that pipeline's been there, I'm seventy years old, and the pipeline's been there since before me.
Do you have, could I ask you a quick question? Do you have residents on the other side of you, Terry Wallace and Mary Ann Lauren? Those are residents there?
Right.
So there's at least four?
And my other sister, Charlie Laurent.
Okay, so there's four residents at least beside, all the way across the street? Five?
Five. Doll Philippi and me, Terry Wallace, Charles Laurent, Bill Shelby, Mrs. Bill Shelby and Mrs. Laurent.
Mr. LeBlanc, do you know, do you know what zoning your property has?
They told me the other day it was residential, because I called and asked.
This is a copy of the official zoning map, and it shows that it's Business Park.
Well, I've been there for seventy years, and it's not a Business Park there. I can promise you.
I understand that, but that's what your zoning is.
Well, it might be, but it's not no Business Park. Because we've all been there, Daddy's owned that property for seventy years, that I know of.
So Charles, this, this green is Business Park? Right? Okay. Just so we're all on the same page here.
Why are we, why are we zoning Business there?
Good question.
That's what I wanna know.
That's the official map of, the official zoning map of Ascension Parish, and that's what it's shown as. It was, when the map was established, that's, that's what he got.
Even though we live in there, I mean, it's zoned commercial.
Well, what he means is that your home is a non-conforming use, just like some of the businesses that are on the north side of the road that are on residential property are non-conforming uses.
I don't know.
Mr. Semterio?
No, I just had a question. I know they're asking for a Business Park to be put here, but the property, if, my understanding was, I think it was Ferris, that it came out a couple of years ago to the planning commission, and they plan on building, building a subdivision that backs up to the two pieces they want to rezone tonight, these two lots. And my understanding was, I was present at the meeting, like they talked about, the first one, it was denied, it came back to increase the lot sizes on the subdivision, and it was approved. So the subdivision, the owners or developers gonna do right behind this, I just wanna make sure it's conducive to a Business Park area, on what they're planning on putting there. Originally, my understanding was this was part of the greens play, of space that they had dedicated, because the land is really low during flood times. They're worried about, the developers said it wouldn't have been worth their while, they had to bring too much field dirt in, so they were gonna leave all this as green space for the subdivision and the kids and all. And they talked about not, even though they own property, they wouldn't make an entrance to seventy-four, to the new subdivision. So that was only my, I guess my question is, there's gonna be more communities than we've got, I think it was maybe a hundred and fifty some odd houses that are coming in right behind this. So I don't know if we can go to Business Park, if we can hold it down to commercial. I also am kinda concerned about what they plan on putting there. Yeah, I don't know if, you know, if we can ask or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Patrice?
Mr. Stone.
That's it. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I'd like the applicant to respond to the, to the question about these two tracks having been part of that, of the development.
This was part of a preliminary plat done with Woodgate Estates a while back. The subdivision itself is funding on Babin Road and hasn't started construction yet, but will shortly. We have approved construction plans and so forth. The pipe, there is a tributary leading, cutting these tracks off and the rest of the development leading into the Grand Gudine, and this is a high area right along seventy-four, where we're gonna develop this two lots. This was part of a larger tract, which the subdivision was done. As far as the pipelines, there is no pipelines on these two pieces of track. There is a lot of pipelines on the property itself, not on these, not on these two tracks. These two tracks have been resubbed to create the one and a half acres, two tracks of one and a half acres. We weren't gonna ever connect Babin to seventy-four at this point, because, he's right, it's too low, we couldn't get a road through there, there's a tributary, a lot of wetlands and that kind of stuff. So there is a vast amount of green area behind these two tracks for the subdivision. I don't know the acreage right offhand, but that was all part of it, yes.
So these two lots were just cut off from the subdivision, they weren't actually part of the subdivision?
That's correct.
Actually, that's...
Well, I'm not sure what the preliminary plat is.
These two lots were created shortly, a short time ago. They came before me as a simple division of property without a variance. And at the time, I looked at, when I looked at the plat, it conformed with all the ordinances to be, to have these two lots created. This is part of the tract that was presented to this commission as Woodgate subdivision. But the, these two lots were recently created within, within the past month.
That's correct.
Mr. Murphy, do you have any type of idea what type of businesses would be going on that property?
No, ma'am, I do not. It would be conformist with Business Park. The client doesn't know anything yet.
The, do you know what type of businesses are allowed? The, the surrounding residents would like a little bit more information, can you, do you have any information that you would like to share?
Well, you can't conditionally rezone, so what he would say would have no bearing on it anyway.
But it might make the surrounding residents more comfortable knowing what's allowed.
Okay.
One thing, you can have single-family residential, you can have community buildings, police, fire stations, educational facilities, commercial schools, medical facilities, barber shops, beauty shops, office activity, bed and breakfast, daycare, warehouses, restaurants, outdoor advertising, light industrial structures and facilities, dry cleaning plants, printing plants, warehouses, wholesale business and storage, and dirt pits, ponds and dirt pits.
Thank you.
And just, just for point of clarification, in a Business Park, they would have to submit a site plan that would have to come before the planning commission for approval, correct?
And maybe more...
So we will get a chance to review that, that submittal, and any buffering, landscaping, circulation, drainage, et cetera.
And having been out there and seen the site, maybe even more importantly, they're gonna have to comply with the drainage ordinance.
Correct.
It's pretty low.
And not all of those uses have to come back. Some are, we don't come back.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
O'Neill, as far as the Business Park being across the street separated by a state highway, as far as like spot zoning would be concerned, what were your understanding of how that, the separation of Highway seventy-four plays into that?
Well, you're, you're in the vicinity of an area that's seeking similar rezoning, so a court would have to decide whether something is spot zoning or not, but you're in a vicinity of a similar use, so it's, it may or may not be as likely. It's not like you're picking this out in the middle of a subdivision and putting it there. That would be spot zoning. Here, you've got a Business Park across the street, I, I think your chances of saying, of it being found to be spot zoning are less likely than if it was in some other areas.
Right. But you, but you're saying Business Park, which is actually five residences, non-conforming, so should we consider that like we would consider the commercial that's non-conforming?
Well, the district is, we're talking about a zoning district.
It's a zoning district.
And the zoning district is Business Park, notwithstanding what the use that's in it, just like the, you know, I think you need to, you know, be careful, separate the district from the use.
Part of the definition of things that can take place in that district is single-family residence.
Correct.
So they're not, they're not...
They're not non-conforming, that's right. You can have a single-family residential in a Business Park.
Well, you know, I find this to be consistent with the character of the, of the area and the, in the zoning district, so I'm gonna make a motion to, to recommend approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
A second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I will, I wanna let everybody know, this is simply a recommendation to the parish council. The parish council will have the final say-so, so this isn't the, the last step. It will go, I don't know, the council would probably get it the first meeting in December, and it would just be up for review, but that's when they would, would actually see this, this item. So any interested parties still have the opportunity to go and present their, their case to the parish council on this matter. Item five B zoning review ID, one eight two six point zero seven, Henry Smith property. Is there here, anyone here representing the Henry Smith property? You don't have to sign in, you could, you could come right on up.
I'm sorry. My name's Doug Villian. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Gary Lewis, who are the owners of this property. I have a few overlay or displays here.
Flip it around.
The subject property is located along the north boundary of the Gonzalez City Limit Line, which runs east-west along Oris Roth Road. In fact, the only means of access to this site is from within the city of Gonzalez. The purpose of our request from RM zoning to crossroad commercial is to allow the construction of apartments on this site. The properties along this road have already experienced a change in the land use from rural to high-density multifamily and commercial activity. Some of the existing houses along Oris Roth Road are vacant and some are deteriorating. On the next display, you'll note on the south side of Oris Roth Road that there's a high, high-intensity land uses and also commercial zone properties along the south side of Oris Roth and Veterans Boulevard. Also, you will note that on the north side of the subject property, there's a large canal which acts as a buffer between the proposed area for apartments and, excuse me, and the residential area to the north of it. On the west side, there's vacant property and a vacant house that's deteriorating. And on the east side of the property, there's a cemetery, a church, and vacant property. The, I've met with the councilman of this district, he lives in the immediate area, and he also supports the project to build apartments on this site. He believes that it's, that the proposed use is consistent with other zoning and land use activities along Oris Roth Road, and did not mind if I mentioned his support at this meeting. I thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, please ask.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
And look, inside of the fact that you literally have bought the city of Gonzalez and you, and your access is from the city of Gonzalez, have you, have you met with the city? Do you have any comments from the city? Does, does the parish have any comments from the city?
I did not meet with any city officials, because it's a zoning case that's outside the city.
I understand, I'm just wondering what...
So I did not meet with them. Now, we do have an engineer that's working on the project, looking into availability of utilities and services that are not readily available outside the city limits.
It is a zoning issue that falls outside the city, therefore, I don't know that it is in the best interest for us to take into consideration what the city's zoning is. We don't fool with the city, and the city doesn't fool with us. The city is a block on the map, and it's one color. We don't, it's, it's not made up of their various zoning, so we shouldn't even take that into consideration, as far as what the city's zoning is adjacent to this property.
Well, you don't have to take...
Now, I mean, at the same time, it's crossroad commercial, where's the crossroad? And please, I know, you switch what, it is the use you want, but it's also crossroad commercial. This is commercial that is best used at an intersection, hence the name crossroad commercial. And not all crossroads should be commercial. So where's the, you know...
May I respond to your comment?
Please do.
Well, I understand you didn't, you're not gonna take in consideration the zoning across the street, but you can certainly take in, consider the land uses across the street, because they impact this site as well as any, any other adjacent land uses.
I tend to look at it from the standpoint of, it's the city and the parish, and I don't mess with the city. That's me. Now, until, until legal counsel says, well, yeah, it's okay for you to do that, I'm not gonna do it, because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get tied up with somebody in Gonzalez saying, well, you're getting into my business, because I don't, I don't want them to get into my business. Let me just comment that I don't think we consider the zoning, but he is talking about use, and that's a matter that you would consider, the land use of the property in the city, not what the city has in zone, but the surrounding uses are a factor to consider in a rezoning.
In this particular case, directly across the street, we've got, whether it's in the city or not, there's a very large newer apartment complex, townhome complex.
As well as acres and acres of...
And that's fine. And now that I have gotten that from Mr. Parenton, I will look at it, but until that point, I was not going to look at it.
I respect your view.
And that's what I'm saying, we don't, we don't cross zonings, but the uses are a factor, because that's what we're talking about here, use factor. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I just have a question, why you asked for crossroads commercial where there is no crossroads rather than mixed use?
Well, you know, that's an interesting point, and I would like to defer to the staff to answer that, because I consulted with the staff on both of the classifications that allow apartments.
You discussed it with Mr. Villian? He only, or the property owner only has two options if he wants to develop apartments, and it would be either mixed use or crossroads commercial, since those are the only two districts allowing multifamily. Crossroads commercial would be more restrictive of the two, and would certainly not allow as many heavy commercial uses as mixed use. So with that in mind, they applied for crossroads commercial.
Other comments or questions from commissioners? All right, then at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
My name is Charles Dempsey, and I'm representing the church that is in front of the property that they're talking about. First of all, just like to say that the property across the street that they're talking about, like you said, it's in city property, and that's the only... like you said, it's in the city property, and that's the only commercial facility in the area. Everything else is strictly residential, you know, a couple of churches in the area. The church I represent has been there for 134 years, and my biggest concern right now is the problem with grade for traffic. If any of you are familiar with that section of town, Oris Roth Road is a very narrow street, and with the influx of traffic from the apartment complex and the close proximity to Highway 30, there's a lot of traffic, a lot more than we've ever been used to in the last couple of years. So, that's, that's a big concern. My second concern would be about what happens in the future. I understand they're going to be building an apartment complex. I'm not sure if they're luxury apartments or low-income apartments or whatever, but in a few years, after a few owners take over, what then if becomes low-income apartments? And my concern, it would have become something like Gaudier Lane area. So, I'm really concerned about, are they going to do any improvement to the infrastructure, first of all, to make the streets wider, street lights? Is it going to be a gated community, security? This part of town is traditionally residential, and it's been farmland most, most of my, all of my life until recently. Most of the older folks have passed on, and the land has been divided, they're doing a lot of building. It's close to Boudreaux Road, and if you're familiar with that area, there's been a lot of construction of homes over there that also adds to the traffic problem on Oris Road. So, I'm really concerned about traffic, first of all, and the influx of a lot of people coming into the area. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Juba Diaz, and first time I appeared before this committee, and I wouldn't, you couldn't give me your job. I'm here on behalf of Gary Lewis, the property owner, who is a friend of mine, and he asked that, he asked, knew that I lived in that area most of my life, asked me to go look at it and see if I would make a recommendation to you. I did, and what I saw was that across the road, although you didn't want to consider it, it is, it is there, there's apartment complexes. I think that what he's proposing, and Adrian Thompson, the councilman, supported it, I think that what he's proposing is reasonable, and so I told him I would be here to recommend that you go forward with this proposal. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
If I have any questions for Mr. Diaz?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else, Patrice?
That's all.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
You know, I think you can't, you can't turn your back on the fact that the property, this area has got a lot of, a lot of multifamily, a lot of commercial activity on it, notwithstanding the condition of the road, it needs a lot of help. But, but the proposed rezoning is consistent with the character of the area and the surrounding land uses in zoning districts, whether they be in the parish or in the city. So, I'm going to make a move to recommend approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas. Seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I object.
I've got one nay.
I object.
I have two nays, Paige Becknell and Steve Barrow. Item 5C, zoning review ID 1827.07, Colonial Stables Inc. property.
Good evening. I'm Greg Swanson with G&amp;G Land Ventures. I'm representing the current landowners, Terry Robert. We're bringing this before you, Michael, you touched on it a little while ago. This is currently non-conforming commercial. Terry purchased this property in 1997. It was done as commercial property. Had been used as commercial property before that. He bought it as a commercial investment. He has used it commercially since he bought it. It's been used as a commercial stable facility. It's also been retail sales for essential equipment rental. They sell farm equipment, trailers, different types of things. They've held a license in both of those corporations. They pay corporate taxes on those. They pay sales tax on all the equipment and stuff that's sold from the property. So, the parish is collecting sales tax on this property, as well as the commercial land use. In 1998, Lamar Signs requested to put a sign on a property. At that time, they had to get permission from the parish and from the state that it would be commercial to approve that permit. The parish approved it as commercial, so the signed permit was given. The two adjacent properties have also gotten signs because this piece of property was considered You know, some say, may say it doesn't fit into that area, but if you, just like the piece that just came before us, if you go 2.2 miles, you're on Highway 30. If you go 2.4 miles, you're at Tanger Mall. 2.6, you're at Cabela's. You go the opposite way, you're 1.6 from Spring Lake Apartments, that's directly across from the piece you just discussed. If you go the opposite way, down 74, you're four miles from the interstate, it's in Prairieville. You're 2.6 miles from the apartment complex that is on Highway 74, and that's why we're requesting the zoning change from residential to commercial. We picked the commercial for the same reason, that the codes were more stringent. We're not asking for apartments on this, we're asking for high-end condominiums, and the, the crossroads was the best, we're advised that was the best way to go instead of mixed use. So, that's why we asked for crossroads commercial, to fit inside that zoning.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Are any of the other properties beside this property non-conforming commercial, like this one is?
No, sir. They are residence. I have spoken to the residents, and all the ones that I have talked to, and there's some here tonight, they have no problem with it. They asked me several questions, we gave them the answers, and they said they would not oppose.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
And there's no other zoning district that Hakenville townhouses in, other than a commercial zoning district?
We checked into that, and that's what we were given. So, in essence, what I'm doing is I'm asking something that's being used as commercial now to put residential on it, but it has to be in that commercial zoning to be able to use it that way. I also talked to Mr. Charles about, we asked if we could have a designation of a condo regime, and we were told legally that was not allowed. So, we were even willing to have it zoned for a specific project, but that's not allowed under the ordinance.
Well, that's not technically correct. You could come in as a spud on that size piece of property, develop it as a condominium.
We looked at that, but we really don't see to where commercial and mixed use would fall into that. I mean, we're just asking for townhomes, we really don't want commercial and everything else.
A spud, you can create whatever you would like.
No, but what Mr. Siegler is saying is that you can come in here with just a residential pod, accomplish exactly what you do, and have a conceptual plan, and go through it, and not resort it to commercial, because what's happening here is that although you are a non-conforming commercial use, none of the surrounding immediate adjoining parcels of land have a commercial zoning district, so there's no consistency to it whatsoever. Where if you brought it in as a pod, you could get your townhouse development, you know...
You could seek approval of it.
You could seek approval, yes. You could seek approval, you could seek approval for it, and it would, and it probably, it would make a lot more logical sense, rather than to a crossroad commercial zoning district that opens the door for a lot of other commercial activity that, through your own statements,
Other comments or questions from commissioners?
Where is the sign that you mentioned along the interstate?
It's on the interstate, it's a Lamar Dixon sign.
So, the commercial zoning that you stated, where, is it adjacent to this property? Or specifically, where is it? Because on the map, it didn't show up anywhere.
Well, it was done in 1998, before the zoning happened again.
We didn't have zoning in this parish before zoning came in. It's a non-conforming use.
Okay. It's a billboard.
Correct.
What's that?
It's a billboard.
And the billboard did not interfere with the, the use.
Correct.
And that was probably looked at. They looked at what was there, and they said it didn't interfere with it, and everything was fine.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Diaz. It's like a Diaz family reunion in here. I got my dad here, my uncle here, and I just found out that their sister's at a birthday party for one of the sisters, so they should be there. Anyway, I rise today or tonight in opposition to the proposal. This, and I think based on your questions, you see the same thing we see. The proposal here is to change property that's zoned residential to crossroads commercial. If you ride down Corner View Road, all you'll see is large lots, old family-style houses, pastures, cows and horses. Once again, we're trying to substitute cows and horses for townhomes and condos, and this is a chance to say no, that an area is zoned residential will stay residential. This in its, in its worst form, and I say worst form, is spot zoning, and there are lawyers here, the lawyer behind me is going to argue that hers is spot zoning too, and we agree, because I found an Attorney General opinion addressed to this body in 1999 about spot zoning. When you take an area, 12 acres, a yellow dot in a sea of blue and green, zoned residential, that's spot zoning. There is no property in this area consistent with what they want to do. There's a lot of cows and a lot of horses, and we want to stay that way. We like their horseville. He said that you couldn't do residential as it's zoned. He's wrong. It's zoned residential. You can't put the number of units that he wants to put. He might not be able to make the money he'd like to make, but he can put residential. He said that some of the landowners are in favor of the project. Numerous, we just found out about this Friday, and that's our fault, there was a sign on the side of the road, but that's our only notice of it. When we found out what it was, we got busy. I filed a petition today, and I think I have maybe 13 names, but you're not going to get a lot of names, because there's not a lot of folks in this area. But the folks I talked to are vehemently against it, and those folks' names you have tonight. I've also submitted written opposition to it, and I hope you'll study it, because it's ICs, Supreme Court cases, that control this area. This is a real simple case. This is spot zoning, it's inconsistent with the rural character and nature of the area, and we'd appreciate it if you'd oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jean-Paul Robert?
Hello, my name is Jean-Paul Robert. I represent Terry Robert, the owner of the property. There's not any commercial adjacent to the property. The best place to look is below the property. It's always been commercial for 40 years. When the parish adopted a zoning plan, it overlaid it. I know it's non-conforming use, but the intent of this property and the use of it has always been commercial. And as was pointed out, this is weird, because to put residences on it, we have to take it from this commercial use under a residential scheme and go with a full commercial to put the residences on. It's the zoning plan that we, that we live under. What they propose is strictly townhouses. Now, spot zoning, as was mentioned by the previous person, spot zoning is a singling out of a small parcel of land for a use classification, which is different from that of the surrounding area, and to the detriment of the other owners. If people come up here, I want you to focus on what detriment they say they're going to suffer. I think they're going to talk about, well, if you make it crossroads commercial, then it could potentially become a bar or some sort of auto body shop or something like that. That is a potential, that's not an actual detriment, that is a hypothetical that people are afraid of. We have proposed townhouses in a plan. This gentleman has built three other subdivisions and done what he wanted to. Mr. Terry Robert has not done business in this parish by doing any kind of bait and switch with this, with this assembly. He's going to do what he said. They're going to sell it to build townhouses, and that's what they're here for. Again, for it to be spot zoning, there has to be a detriment to the surrounding landowner. And I would like for you to focus on whether they have any actual detriment, or they just don't like this piece of property. It's a variance that they're requesting. We grant variances in here all the time. All they're granting is a variance to go commercial, to put residential on a piece of property that was commercial for 40 years. Technically, under what it is, they could sell equipment and do all sorts of commercial activities.
30 seconds, sir.
They want to put residential on the property. And please focus, when spot zoning is mentioned, on whether there's actual, actually any detriment to the surrounding landowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
You come in.
My name is Linda Reynolds, I represent the property owners on Thurston McCory Road. I'm a lifelong resident of Thurston McCory Road. The property was previously used by Dick Henley for Henley Construction. Then it was used by Mr. Augrey. Now, the property's been being used by Mr. Terry Robert as a horse facility and to sell equipment. We have no problems with the landowners' parallel that, by his property for this to be done and charged. No opposition. And we trust Mr. Robert and what he's saying. And I feel like this, you know, to have it zoned for this would be much better than some other things that could be done with the property. Thank you.
You.
Mr. Kerry Diaz?
Good evening. My name is Kerry Diaz. Just a couple of quick points. One thing is, they want to rezonate to crossroads commercial, and I guess my question is, where are the crossroads? Because I live in the area, there are no crossroads in that area where this facility is. And another, another point I would like to make is, the, the traffic impact would probably be fairly detrimental. We who live in the community have aptly named one of the curves in the Corner View Road right near this area, Dead Man's Curve. It's called that for a reason. There are accidents. In fact, one of the brick columns that is the gate to this property, if you pass by it right now, that column is about to fall over, because it was just recently hit by a vehicle coming out of what we call Dead Man's Curve. So, just wanted to address those two things, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Patrice?
That's all.
That's all. Have any other comments for us?
Any other questions? I would say that, to rebut what he just said, you know, the traffic impact will be done with the preliminary plat and the pre-op meeting, so that, the traffic shouldn't have an impact on the zoning. It should be, come up when it's time for the preliminary plat to be looked at, not now.
I just want to make a comment too.
Because I can't, I can't say anything with the traffic... Because I can't say anything whether the traffic will be bad or good, so I can't dispute that.
I just want to make an observation to you about the ordinance. Notwithstanding what recommendation you get from us, you realize that if your rezoning request that you've made gets denied, you have to wait a year before you can resubmit. Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Would the applicant be willing to consider the spud option that was previously mentioned, given that you don't have to have commercial as the staff has let you know?
I would be willing to look at it, but we're probably going to be standing here in the same position because the previous speakers have said, no matter what we do or come before, they will adamantly fight it because they want nothing but rural there. My personal opinion is I don't think they have the right to deny Terry Robaire to sell his property just because they want to see cows a mile and a half down the road from their house. The people that are directly adjacent to this property have no problems with it.
Mr. Swanson, no one is denying Mr. Robaire the right to sell his property. The issue here is a use. Now, I take this road every day home. I know what it's like. I also know that we have approved other developments down through this road. This is a substandard road, okay? Yeah, it's a horse farm. A horse farm is a lesser evil. Right now, I'm kind of confused because I look at more residential development. And in fact, Mr. Sigler is supposed to be giving me some figures on the number of available lots, which right now, I'm looking at close to 3,500. And we're down 40 or higher, and we're down 45 to 50% less in residential building permits this year than last year. So I'm trying to figure out, why are we going to ask for more residential? Where are these people supposed to come from that's going to live here? We've got a secondhand housing market that's increasing due to foreclosures because of the high prices of houses and people can't pay for them. No one's denying anybody the right to use their property, to sell their property or anything else. But we have laws, we have the ordinances we have to follow. Now, and you can say what you want, this is spot zoning. You've got medium intensity residential here, and on the other side of the interstate, you've got conservation. Crossroad commercial is going to put a big yellow dot in the center of medium intensity residential. That's spot zoning. Add to the fact you've got substandard infrastructure, and there have already been numerous wrecks. Add to the fact there's going to be more traffic when these other developments come on, fully come online. Please don't come in here and tell this commission that we're trying to deny anybody the use of their property or the right to sell their property to get their use out of it.
It was bought and invested as commercial property.
Well, I'd like to clear up something. I've heard the comment tonight that this is a non-conforming use because it's in an MR zone, but clearly, according to the code, light agricultural activities, including farming and ranching-related activities, is allowed in there. The only thing that's not allowed is heavy agricultural uses, which would imply a feedlot or slaughterhouse or something of that nature. Its existing use is not what I would consider a non-conforming use at all, particularly in that area with what takes place on other adjacent property up and down the road.
Mr. Swanson, let me clarify a couple of points that your counsel. We don't grant variances here. We, you know, we make a recommendation on rezonings from a district to a district. Unfortunately, when we make that recommendation to that district, what you propose is really of no consequence because all of the uses that are permitted in that district will become permissible, okay? I'm going to make a motion to defer this for 30 days and give you an opportunity to meet with staff and consider amending your application to something else that would allow you to do your townhouses. I don't necessarily view that use as an objectional, and I didn't hear a whole lot of complaints about the particular use, but I hear a lot of issues with the district, and I have a problem with the district. It just wouldn't be consistent with the character of the area. So I'm going to make a motion to defer and give you an opportunity to meet with staff and explore other opportunities to accomplish what your stated goal is.
And I'd like to make a substitute motion to deny because crossroads commercial is not consistent with the area.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas to defer. I have a substitute motion by Sherri Slimon to deny. So I'm looking for a second.
I second the substitute motion.
Okay. I have a second on the substitute motion by Paige Becknell. And the original motion dies for lack of a second. So the substitute motion becomes the only motion we're going to vote on. Motion to deny by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Item 5D, zoning review, 1828.07, Judy B. Walters', Vivian Villnerve', and Margaret Kernan property.
Hello. I'm Vivian Villnerve, and I'm representing the heirs of the property on Church Point and Roddy, the southwest corner. We would like to request rezoning for that area. We don't have any big plans as far as apartments or anything like that. We just have several heirs. We would like to clear the land and put it up for sale. But we really, we don't have any plans to do any development. We would just like to expand our possibilities.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. I'm sorry, what was your name, ma'am?
Vivian Villnerve.
Ms. Vivian. Did y'all try to sell the land yet? Have you put it up for sale?
Years ago, we did have it for sale.
Years ago, but not recently?
Not recently.
Okay. It's a beautiful piece of land, and I just, that's why I wondered, okay?
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? There are no other comments or questions, and we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jessie LeBlanc. I am here, first of all, I just want to make it clear, although I am an attorney, I love my neighbors dearly, but I'm not here representing any of them tonight for ethical reasons. I wanted to make sure that that was clear. I wanted to speak to you a little bit tonight about the development or the proposed rezoning. This is behind my home. I live on Pertwee Acres, which is adjacent to this property. And I'd just like to point out, I know Mr. Parentin educates you well on spot zoning, but the premier case on this is the Sears-Robuck case, and it points out that while spot zoning is not always illegal, there are certain factors that you look for. And whenever I tell you these, I'd like you to keep in mind that the property that we're talking about is at the corner of Church Point and Roddy Road. And if you look at Roddy Road, start at Airline Highway and go all the way out to Highway 42, I think you'll probably only find two intersections where it's commercial, and that's at Airline and again at Bayou Narcisse and Roddy Road. Everything else there is residential. This property, all four corners are residential. One of them does have multifamily dwelling units on it that were there probably before zoning started. But one of the first tests that the court looked at in that case was whether the property is so inherently distinguishable from the surrounding property that it can no longer be used for the purpose that that district was established for. So we're asking, is this property no longer usable for a use that's allowed in rural zoning? I would submit to you that this property can still be used for all rural uses that are in your code right now without having to be rezoned. Secondly, is the area or adjoining land subject to a non-conforming use already? This property is not already subject to a non-conforming commercial use. There is a multifamily residential area across the street, but not any other commercial use. And then the next two are a little bit more cloudy and difficult to distinguish, but the third one is, is a spot created arbitrarily discriminatory? Are you creating a zone? Are you looking at an area that's only going to benefit a particular property owner and not the general welfare? And finally, does a rezoning further your goals of your comprehensive land use plan or your comprehensive zoning? Again, I just wanted to bring these to your attention and submit to you that I don't believe that this is the proper time or the proper place to rezone this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rob Nance?
Good evening. My name is Bob Nance. I'm also a resident of Pertwee Acres. I owned property on that street for quite a few years, even before the apartments were built. That being said, if you go down Roddy Road at the Church Point intersection several different times a day, it backs up all the way to Turry Road from Airline Highway on Church Point and past Buzzzy Landry's driveway on Roddy Road. Other times of the day, they back up coming the other direction. Our street hits Roddy Road just past a bridge, and at high traffic times, I have to wait a long time to get out to go to my business over on Airline Highway. Sometimes it's so bad, I have to turn right instead of, and go all the way to Walmart to get there. As Jessie pointed out, this is spot zoning. Those apartments are there, but they were there before we had zoning. And I'm glad we have zoning now and hopefully that we won't be putting any kind of commercial establishment in this highly congested area. I have some pictures here that may or may not, you may not be able to see. It looks like some beautiful lawn. This one right here is shooting from my house down toward Tommy Marshawn's house. And as you can see, there's a car visible in the road, and they back up, if you look, they'll back up all the way back to here several different times a day. This picture right here is shooting out Pat Gootrow's driveway toward Church Point Road, and as you can see, those cars are backed up to Turry Road. And this one also points out the same thing. That traffic backs up. This one here is, everything's backed up, all four directions. I think they could sell this piece of property and make a beautiful homesite or a beautiful tree. And they really have done a lot of work on that property to make it pretty. And I'd hate to see all those nasty trees be cut down for apartments or a gas station. And I hope you will consider our opposition to it as justified. We like our small neighborhood. I've raised my kids there.
30 seconds, sir.
And my grandkids come there frequently, and I'd like it to stay residential. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bob Landry?
Good afternoon, evening. My name is Bob Landry. I'm a resident of the Roddy Road area, in that particular area, for a little over 27 years. Several years ago, I was in front of the board, in front of the commission on another project. And during that time, I found out that the highest traffic count in the parish, on any parish roadway given, was at the intersection of Roddy Road and Preston-Landry Road, which was right in front of my house. The average daily traffic count, pre-Catrina, was well over 6,000 vehicles a day. As Mr. Nance stated earlier, during peak traffic hours, traffic gets backed up anywhere from 400 to 500 yards from the intersection of Roddy Road and Church Point, both on Roddy Road and both on Church Point. It's a well-developed residential area. Most of the people who live there have been there for myself 20 years, most everybody else, I would think, for the same amount of time. We would like to see the area remain a residential area, as stated earlier by Ms. LeBlanc. If you ride from one end of Roddy Road to the far end of Roddy Road, there's really no commercial properties that would benefit that particular area. I would speak out in opposition to changing that section to a commercial property. It is a beautiful piece of property. It would be a beautiful homesite if someone chose to buy it and develop it as such. Thank you.
You, sir.
Mr. Lynn Boodwatt?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a friend of the family who requests the zoning change. I'd like to point out that if you go north of that property, the next intersection is a service station, Quick Pick, and there's a barroom on the other side. If you go south of that property, where 429 intersects with Roddy Road, that property is zoned mixed use. One of the lots owned by the Landry family. Across the street from them is a large trailer park. You go east from that property, the next intersection is where Santa Mo High School is and Pitt Stop, commercial. If you go west from that property, you get to the corner where, of course, it intersects with Highway 61, McDonald's, daiquiri shop, restaurant, et cetera. So if you go along there, it's not going to be a yellow spot like on the map, which is going to be the only one. There are others. And Pertwee Acres is separated from this property by Bayou, Bayou Narcisse. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
That's all.
That's it. Mr. Sigler, you got something to share with us?
Staff's only comment would be, you know, right around we look at all these locations, obviously before we, for these meetings. And this particular location is one, you know, we're very familiar with because we drive by it every day to go to work because about two blocks down the road is Public Works and the Planning Department. Every day, around 5 o'clock, 5:30, traffic stacks up simply generated by our own employees on Church Point Road up to and even with Public Works, the Planning Department, and sometimes backed up in the parking lot beyond that. There's a substantial amount of traffic at those intersections right now, certainly about all it can bear those times of day. That is a really nice intersection, a very nice piece of property. We've heard comments about mixed family, multifamily dwellings on the opposite corner and a trailer park further down the road. And the reality is, those are things that happened years ago that in retrospect probably weren't the best decision in the world. Regardless, that does not mean that you allow another mistake to be made. And certainly, in my opinion, that is not the best use for that piece of property at this time.
Thank you, sir. Comments or questions from commissioners?
There's no comments or questions from commissioners. What's the wish of the commission? This is probably the most obvious case of spot zoning that, you know, I've seen since I've been in the commission, so I'm going to make a motion to deny, recommend deny.
Have a motion denied by Julio Dumas. Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5E, zoning review ID 1829.07, Maurice Indest and Dana Buford property. Item 5E, zoning review ID 1829.07, Maurice Indest and Dana Buford property.
Thank you for your time. My name is Chris Eddy, and my partner Rodney Daigle and I have formed Gator Environmental Waste Solutions to facilitate the development of a construction and demolition CND landfill to be located in Ascension Parish. The selected site for this landfill is located south of Sorento on Highway 70, approximately 1.5 miles south of Highway 22, and contains 75 acres. Our purpose in being here tonight is to request a rezoning of the property from Business Park to Industrial in order to meet the land use criteria within the parish of Ascension. The location of this site is ideal for several reasons, its layout, size, and location. It is near I-10 and two major highways to facilitate the transportation of waste. The site is located on property adjacent to the existing allied waste facility known as BFI landfill, Colonial landfill. Colonial landfill has had a standard solid waste permit for many years and is what is referred to as a Type 1, Type 2 landfill. It is allowed to accept both municipal and industrial waste. We plan to construct the CND landfill after the approval of a Type 3 permit by Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. We will also manage and operate the ongoing activities of the CND landfill at that time. The current proposed plot will allow for approximately 60 acres of usable landfill space. Our project offers Ascension Parish a replacement landfill for the only CND in Ascension Parish, D&amp;J landfill, that has been ordered closed by Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality to close April in 2008. Eagle Environmental Services will assist us in submitting the solid waste permit application and water discharge permit application to the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. Once the permits have been obtained, Eagle will continue to serve as our consultant to ensure environmental compliance. Eagle Environmental Services is a local environmental firm that has vast experience in the permitting process for various facilities throughout the belt-south region. Our proposed facility provides Ascension Parish with a solution for the disposal of construction and demolition materials by offering a well-run landfill and an optimal location. This facility will provide disposal for construction and demolition debris, wood waste, and yard trash, thus catering to the needs of the entire community. According to an US EPA report, it is estimated that up to 30% to 40% of the CND waste generated in the United States is managed on-site, disposed of at a Type 1 or Type 2 landfill, and/or illegally dumped at unpermitted locations. It is essential that the public have access to a Type 3 facility in a fast-growing parish like Ascension. Our facility will provide the parish with several long-term positive impacts. A competitively priced Type 3 facility will help ensure that each category of waste will be properly disposed of in the appropriate facility, thus providing for a longer lifespan for the current Type 1 and Type 2 landfill. These Type 1 and Type 2 landfills are typically much more expensive to operate and maintain, and needless to say, it is much harder to place additional facilities within the community once they reach capacity, the existing ones reach capacity. An affordable CND facility provides for the proper disposal of construction material, demolition debris, wood waste, and yard trash, not to be placed on the side of a road or in an empty field, allowing illegal disposal of waste to be alleviated. The economic benefit associated with our new landfill will come in many aspects. First and foremost, economic benefits will be provided in employment with local jobs. Second to employment will be the use of local services and materials purchased within the parish. The facility is estimated to employ 79 full-time employees with an estimated annual payroll of $267,000. Local services and materials purchased are estimated to be in excess of $200,000 annually. Initial costs for construction-related services are in excess of $850,000. Once in operation, this proposed CND landfill will also act as an economic stimulant that will benefit the growth of this parish. We've been told by staff at the Ascension Economic Development Corporation that many of the requests or proposals received by their office from large industrial prospects ask the question, where's the nearest construction, demolition, and demolition landfill, and what are the costs required to dispose of waste in area landfills? Once D&amp;J landfill closes, the nearest permitted facility will be in North Baton Rouge. This facility is located 31 miles north of Gonzalez, and based on typical traffic conditions on I-10, a one-way trip to the facility from Gonzalez could take over an hour. Some of the other key benefits associated with this type of facility are no increased burden in public costs for police, fire protection, or roads. The parish and local government agencies will be offered a significant 25% discount off the usual tipping fees for Type 3 waste disposal. With certain restrictions, parish residents will be allowed to dispose of yard wood waste free on the first Saturday of every month. In addition, upon approval by the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, the facility will be used as a drop-off collection point for household hazardous waste on annual household hazardous waste collection days. This service will be coordinated with our consultants, Eagle Environmental Services. For the reasons I have illustrated, I hope you will support us with our request to rezone the property to Industrial for the continued positive growth of Ascension Parish. Thank you very much for your consideration for our request.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, on the map here, it's showing that a good portion of the proposed thing looks like it's in conservation. Is that right? Okay, but the application says it's going from Business Park to Industrial. Is that right? I mean, just looking at the green versus blue here, it looks like about 70% conservation?
But when we figured it, that wasn't actually the case.
Okay, so this may not be drawn to scale.
It may not be drawn to scale because it was split, but when we came up with better than 50% in the Business Park.
Okay, so it's at least 50% Business Park?
Correct.
Okay.
We have met with these developers and talked, developers of this proposed landfill, and talked about this pretty extensively, and I doubt you're going to find a better location for a new landfill next, than the old, right next to the one that's already in operation.
Okay, I've got a question. Let's go back to the percentage. Now, y'all are saying that you figured it up and it's better than 50%.
Better than 51.
Better than 51. Well, okay, why did we get this map, then?
I don't know why this map, I have not seen this particular map. We're using the larger map that was busted out into the individual pieces of property.
Because, I mean, okay, I take this and I review, I review this material over the weekend, and what I'm looking at is different than what you've just told me.
Okay.
So I think one thing, and I...
That's the first time I've seen that map, the map that you're holding right now.
Well, just for a point of clarification, what's the depth of the Business Park zoning district? You know, it looks to me like the map shows a corridor. Was it a predetermined depth of the corridor?
I do not remember what the depth of that was.
Oh, Neil, if we make a motion, if we were to make a motion and we said to include conservation in motion, would that be okay?
Sure. You want to rezone this whole track as we're doing.
Right.
You would be rezoning this track.
Right.
I have a question before you make your motion.
No, I'm not making a motion yet.
Okay.
I was just asking a question.
Okay, I just wanted to ask a question. D&amp;J, that's the one that is closing because of the smell?
That's what we've...
Okay, how do we know you're not going to have the same problem they have? What can be done to prevent that smell? Because I live in Prairieville, and I have smelt it.
Well, I think first and foremost, the important thing to focus on is environmental compliance, and one of our partners in this endeavor is Eagle Environmental Services. But as I stated in my speech, they have a vast experience in permitting these regulated facilities, and I think that the most important thing is, in any type of facility like this, is the proper management. Rodney Daigle, who's my partner in this endeavor, he'll be the operator, one of the operators of the facility. He's worked at BASF for 18 years. So I think that, you know, several things come into factor. First is to make sure that it's properly maintained and that you follow all of the requirements of the compliance for Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, and to make sure that you operate it in an appropriate fashion. So I also have Anita Peterson here. She's with Eagle Environmental Services, so if you have any questions for her, she'd be more than happy to answer for you. Did that answer your question?
Well, I have a question about that, your answer. Does D&amp;J not have to follow the same rules that you will have to follow?
I'm sure they were supposed to.
They were shut down.
They've been ordered to shut down for, you know, for numerous...
Is that why they're shutting down? Okay.
They were shut...
That's what I didn't know. Okay.
I kind of went around about well on that answer.
All right. That answered my question.
Well, but we assume someone who has a facility like that, we assume they're going to follow the regulations, just like we assume you're going to.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess we don't have any guarantees.
Right.
That's up to DEQ.
Well, this one's being permitted from the get-go, and I think that the other one existed without a permit for quite some period of time.
Still doesn't have one.
Yeah, it is a, it will no longer exist within a year, but it has never officially been permitted that I'm aware of.
So they have run a facility like this without a permit?
Yes, but...
Is that what you're telling me? Okay, I'm just trying to understand. That's fine.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Anita Peterson. I currently work for Eagle Environmental Services, a local environmental firm located just across the parish line in East Baton Rouge. I am retired from the Department of Environmental Quality. I can tell you, this is a facility that I dealt with for years while I was in solid waste permits at DEQ. D&amp;J field was originally constructed, I hate to call it a CND facility, it was constructed as a dump prior to the DEQ requiring construction, demolition facilities to even have a permit, which that occurred in 1994. So this facility has been in existence for over 14 years. Facilities like this that were, so to speak, grandfathered in, started out with no big plans. They dump a little place, clear another little place, dump another little place, and if you're familiar with how the facility was operated, right now, they are in the process of having some discussions with the Corps of Engineers to remove the construction, demolition debris that they actually dispose in the wetlands. Reason I'm saying all of this, in order to operate a facility properly like this, you have to start with a plan at the beginning, good engineering practices, and have a facility behind you that is used to operating under good engineering practices, and might add, probably has one of the best track records of any environmental firm in the Baton Rouge area. I would not have gone to work for them after being at DEQ for 15 years had I not seen this with them before.
You mentioned the word engineer a few times. How many engineers will be on-site once it's in operation versus how many are working on the planning and et cetera right now?
Right now, there are, it doesn't require just an engineer to plan one of these. You require people that look at land use at what we call IT questions as far as what, you know, benefits and bad points the facility would have. We've already done borings at the site, our geologists have, and we have two engineers that are now working on it. You ask how many engineers are going to be there while it's operating. A facility as large as Colonial out there doesn't even have an engineer on-site during operation.
Okay, but when you're speaking to engineering, you're talking about pre-engineering beforehand?
Pre-engineering, design, and actually writing up an approved operational plan. You submit these in the form of a rather large permit application to DEQ, and they go through everything in it, operations, geology, design. They approve it, and you are bound by this permit while you're operating. What they do require, if you have a permitted facility, is a certified operator, at least one on-site at all times that the gate is open.
Let me ask you one other question along those lines, but it's not just DEQ, you have to get a permit from, you have a lot of other agencies you have to get permits from, correct?
Permits exactly? No. We have to get a determination from the US Army Corps of Engineers, which we have already submitted the paperwork to them. We also have to get letters from Department of Wildlife and Fisheries, Parks and Recreation, Historic and Preservation people, basically stating that within a certain radius of the facility that they are, there are no other historic sites, endangered wildlife as such. We are in the process right now of seeking all of those concurrences.
All right, one other question, and then once it's constructed, you know, there's ongoing monitoring and ongoing testing to make sure groundwater and what have you isn't affected?
DEQ does not require groundwater monitoring as such. What they do require is surface water monitoring.
Sure, okay.
Construction, demolition sites primarily are not considered to be facilities that produce a leachate that would impact the groundwater.
Okay, you kind of touched on a question I have, Julio, because I was going to ask, what is the frequency of inspection?
Often, it's DEQ wants to come out.
So there, so, I mean, but there is no determined...
It's not written in the regulations. DEQ has policies.
So in other words, DEQ may or may not go out and inspect the site.
It becomes more frequent if someone else complains, which is...
So it's based on, so it's based on the number of complaints?
A number of complaints.
So theoretically, I understand what you're saying, theoretically, hypothetically, you could say, accept a contract for some industrial waste and bury it on your site unless somebody complains?
You could do that in your backyard, sir.
Technically, you could, but we're not talking about my backyard. The issue here is, I'm just, it's a hypothetical situation. I'm just asking a question.
I understand that. A facility that wants to stay in business and not get these huge fines that have been given by the DEQ to D&amp;J certainly would not choose to operate in that fashion.
And I understand that.
Right.
But at the same time, we found some other sites here in the parish that, back when it was still legal and you could do it, and then we've got, I was simply asking a question for my own curiosity because...
When it was legal and those sites were not inspected at all, it's pretty easy for people to dump.
If DEQ is not checking, or the only thing that DEQ is really looking for is surface water?
Oh, they have solid waste inspectors that go out. But all I'm telling you is, they do not set a certain schedule for inspecting.
But they do have inspections.
They do have inspections, absolutely.
Unless there are, well, as you said, it was not written as such.
They go out more frequently.
If there are complaints. But my question was, what is the frequency of their inspections? Is it every six months, once a year? That's what I'm trying to find.
I believe that they are required once a year to go out. Now, I have never seen them go that infrequently to a place. I would venture to say D&amp;J probably has somebody out there at least once every two weeks right now, from the looks of what's in their file.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I have one question. Say we rezone it to this, what is preventing it from becoming a Type 2 or 3, and not, I mean, 1 and 2, and not keeping it at 3?
Well, I would...
I mean, because it's just zoning, is all it is.
Right, it's simply zoning. We're a small company, and BFI could run us out of business real quick by cutting our prices. And you don't build a Type 1 or 2 facility on something this small. If you look at the number of trucks that goes into BFI every day, we're looking at 30 trucks a day. They take hundreds of them.
And I guess that's my, once it's at capacity next door, what's to say that they don't look over there and be the capitalists that they are and say, we've already got a place right next door that's got the zoning that we need?
But we would already have a permit. If you're going to construct a Type 1 or 2 facility, you have to place three feet of recompacted clay on a synthetic liner under it. So they couldn't come over and buy it and start placing...
I understand, that's after you have done all the pre-engineering, but once we rezone it, say, a year from now, none of this has taken place. They say, okay, we've already got a good solution to a problem we foresee, and they come in to these guys and say, we're going to give you... and they come in to these guys and say, "We're going to give you, you know, whatever, just some astronomical amount of money for your site, because you've got the rezoning that we need."
Mr. Eddie's purchase agreement is contingent on him receiving a type-three standard permit from the DEQ.
That's what I want to hear.
Yes, sir.
Because it is my backyard.
Yes.
Pretty close to it.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Not that we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name's Elizabeth Ballard. I'm also with Eagle, and I'd like to answer one of your questions concerning the inspections, frequency of inspections. I'm going to be writing the water discharge permit for this facility. Now, even though solid waste inspectors do not have anything in the regulations, water inspectors have to come out by memorandum of agreement between LDEQ and EPA at least every three years. If it's a major facility, they have to come out once a year, complaints irregardless. They have to. So if they, if the water inspector sees a problem, it's not, it's not going to be kept within just water. He will call the solid waste people. They are now, enforcement at DEQ is now merged, so it's not so media-specific as it was in the past. So I hope that clarifies something on the inspection from DEQ and the oversight that they would give. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, sir, you have any other comments with the commission?
No, I don't, thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Look at me.
It's our backyard, that's for sure.
That's true.
It's not far, it's not far from our home. You know, I have to admit, you know, I hate to see a, a solid waste facility expand and, you know, I know it's not the same, but it is an expansion, but it is the best location, you know, BFI's there, the other facility's right there. I'm going to make a motion, a motion to recommend approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item six, new business, discussion by Ron Siller concerning proposed amendments to
We've had a couple of issues that have come up more recently, and we would like to take a more proactive stance on making some changes in our current codes and ordinances. First one I'd like to talk about is our exterior lighting standards. Some of you may be aware of an issue that's taking place with a wall, new Walgreens facility in Dutch Town, and this is the first instance of exterior lighting standards in our code coming into question. And as we go through this, we'll, we'll read the current version and the proposed versions. We could read them out for the record, but I think you've got copies of those sitting there. The problem is, our particular code does not agree with what most other folks' codes do, and actually, there are some portions of our code that are so wide open that I don't know how you make a definitive decision if we got into a court of law or you can defend it or not. Thus, we suggest, and in talking with Chris, our engineer, and consulting Baton Rouge's ordinances, we feel like that quantifying the amount of light, as you see in red, where we suggest any artificial light greater than two-foot candles falling eight feet outside the boundaries of the property on which the outdoor luminaire is installed, is a standard by which we can actually judge and enforce. When we went out to this particular site to answer complaints and questions about lighting, we got into a situation with the building department in which, you know, really, we had very little direction from the way things are written right now. This establishes a standard for us to use.
What is a foot candle?
A foot candle is a unit of light measurement, and I couldn't tell you exactly what it is. I can just tell you that the equipment measures it very accurately. It's an definitive measure.
Okay.
I won't claim to be an expert on that.
Legal strongly recommends that we adopt a standard.
Right.
That we have a standard that makes no sense at all.
Okay.
Right.
Well, did legal happen to take a glimmer at our bylaws that the commission adopted?
No.
Okay. Recommendations should be going to subcommittee, and we get a recommendation from our subcommittee. Now, that was the bylaws adopted by this commission. Not saying that we would go ahead and, and we're going to turn this down, but I mean, the commission went ahead and adopted bylaws, which when we voted on those, that was basically saying, "Hey, we're going to live by it. These are the rules we're setting for ourselves, and we're going to go by them." And in this case, this is something that really should go through the zoning subcommittee and then come from the subcommittee to the full commission. Now, if the commission wants to go ahead and a motion is made that they want to waive that, waive going through subcommittee in this case, then they can do that, but what's the point in adopting bylaws if we're not going to live by them? This is zoning.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear the rest of the items that he's gotten in his memo, his explanation of the rest of, you know, Mr. Segler?
The second one has to do with Table B site requirements by district residential. And as you will remember, we have debated and discussed turning circles, T-turnarounds, yard corners, and reducing the setback as we go into these subdivisions, and we have approved making those changes because we said, as a staff, we need to make those changes. However, in doing so, inadvertently also created some additional issues, because the way that it's currently worded allows them to eliminate the setback on both sides of the street, therefore substantially not creating the kind of situation we wanted on corner lots in particular. So we suggest a change wording to eliminate this in the future that says that lots fronting on turning circles, T-turnarounds at corner lots, which have a common rear lot line with another corner lot, may be reduced the side-street, side-yard to one-half the required front yard. Otherwise, we end up with something we didn't intend at all. We've already seen a few of them. And in this particular case, I didn't think about sending it back to committee because we went through committee and came up with the wording, and in this case, this is a change of wording to fix and get something back to where I felt confident that's what the committee meant before.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I mean, the chair is correct. I mean, we do have, we do have a subcommittee supposed to be working on these things and bring them before that.
Why spend another month waiting on it?
Right, but why? Well, what I was going to say is that, you know, with respect to the lighting issue, I mean, that's real critical. I mean, we need to have more and more of those standards in the ordinance, and this is, and this is actually, this two-foot candle standard, it's a pretty universal standard that's used across the country. So it, so it should be, you know, it should be fine. I don't have a problem with it. With respect to the other one, I think we discussed that at length before, and I think what we're doing there is a correction.
Right.
So, you know, if it requires a motion to suspend our bylaws, I'll make a motion to suspend the bylaws and, and recommend to the, to the, to us that, that we go to a public hearing next month with a draft ordinances for both of these items.
I have a motion to, to suspend the bylaws in, pertaining to these two items.
Second.
And bring these issues up before the commission in public hearing at next month's meeting.
Second.
By Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherri Slime. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Thank you. Item seven, old business, adoption of revised September 12th, two-seven, two thousand and seven minutes. You have the sheet with the revisions in front of you. As you can see, it was managed, just a couple of housekeeping items, a date, and actually the, the individuals making the motion, and the second thing, the motion for the acceptance of minutes of the August 9th, two thousand and seven.
Make a motion to approve the revised minutes.
Second.
I have a motion to, to approve the revision, revised minutes of the September 12th, two thousand and seven meeting by Steve Barrow, seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item eight, subcommittee report.
As you know, sir, we have, the chair, we didn't have a subcommittee meeting last month, but we are, we have one scheduled coming up.
For November?
Yes, sir.
Two holidays going.
Uh, let me ask.
You've got a calendar.
Okay, I don't know if you're planning on scheduling one for December traditionally. You know, subcommittees don't know.
No, we're not going to have one in December.
Because of the holidays and so forth, so, okay. If that's it, then item nine, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Julio Dumas to adjourn, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes, and we are adjourned.